Today is July 25, 2023. The time is now 5:32 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I do see we have a quorum here this evening. Thank you all for attending. We've asked Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come together this day again asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Continue to allow us to grow closer as a group and team as we nurture the bonds of our communities. Guide us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Put within us a continued energy as we move forward. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in the service of humanity and progress in Georgetown County. Continued peace and blessings to all in our country, state, in your holy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move down to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda is adopted. Going down to our special reports and presentations. Georgetown County and the Francis P. Bunnell Foundation are partnering to spotlight a local nonprofit at each county council meeting. Tonight's spotlight will be on SC Maritime Museum, and Ms. Susan Davis will make the Good afternoon, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Chairman, Council, and Bunnell Foundation for giving me the time to tell a little bit about our museum, the South Carolina Maritime Museum.
Will you put your mic closer to you, please?
Yes, sir. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. I'm not Susan Davis. I am Hope McFadden. I'm the administrator of the South Carolina Maritime Museum. I look forward to telling you a little bit about the museum's past, our current projects, and future endeavors. The mission of the South Carolina Maritime Museum is to preserve and promote the maritime heritage of Georgetown and South Carolina. We do this through engaging artifacts and exhibit variety of programs and events, of which I will tell you a little bit more about. The Harbor Historical Association, which is the association that operates the Maritime Museum, was founded in 1996 with a few locals who were interested in Georgetown's maritime traditions and history. The goal was simple, to open a museum celebrating the maritime history of Georgetown and South Carolina. We started in a small room at the Chamber of Commerce, moved to our current location in 2011 at 729 Front Street. In 2017, we were offered the opportunity to expand to our second floor, which provided space to expand our exhibits twofold. One of the things that I'm most proud about our museum is that we're free. We cherish the opportunity to share our stories to those interested, both local and visitors, at no charge. We do this, we're able to do this through donations, events, et cetera. We're open Monday through Saturday, 11 to 5:00. We annually have 25,000-plus visitors. Already this year, we've had at least one person from every state in the U.S. In addition, over 12 different countries have visited our museum. We're very proud to expand our broad reach and tell our stories. We have permanent and rotating exhibits, some of which include the Frenell Lins from the Georgetown Lighthouse, hurricane tracking maps, which we're not going to discuss because that's not going to happen this year, shipwrecks, artifacts and stories from shipwrecks off South Carolina's coast, the incredible story of Robert Smalls and his escape on the planter, Harvest Moon, Hunley, and Henrietta, the largest wooden sailing vessel built in South Carolina. Some of our rotating exhibits include fossil discoveries in South Carolina. If you're a fan of shark's teeth, we have Megalodon still on display, the Battleship of South Carolina, Tale of Two Shrimp Boats, if you're a fan of Forrest Gump, the shrimp boat in that, the Jenny, was in fact a boat built in Beaufort, South Carolina, called the Miss Sherry. And of course, still on display is the story of the transatlantic slave trade, an important part of history that we're honored to share with the public. Partnerships are how we connect and grow with our community. From the U.S. Coast Guard, who we were honored to celebrate change of command ceremony last month, many exhibits from Coastal Carolina University, near Winawarra Rivers Alliance, and a traveling exhibit from the Smithsonian on Waterways, we're honored to learn more about other organizations with similar missions and share their stories and successes. Yesterday, we were honored by the county and gifted the ship's log from the Port of Georgetown, detailing ships that came through the port from the late 1950s to 2016 when it closed. This important piece of history is now a special part of the museum's story that we look forward to sharing with the public. We welcome school groups of all kinds. We love kids in the museum. We have a fun scavenger hunt for them, and are always, always, it's such a pleasure to share the importance of waterways with the kids. We're currently working with educators to share some of the exhibits that we've created to create curriculum utilizing the museum's research so teachers have easy access to share the impactful ways waterways have played in our county. A few events that help support our organization include an annual membership drive, History for Lunch, Night of Knowledge, Trivia Night, Burning of the Socks, which is a fun old maritime tradition where you do indeed burn your socks. A few years ago, someone suggested that in addition to burning socks, we ask our attendees to donate new socks. So we have had the honor of donating a couple hundred pairs of socks to Friendship Place with that partnership. We have Brown's Ferry Vessel Commemorative Wall. You can honor memorialized a loved one with a plaque on a brick that was pulled up from the Brown's Ferry Vessel in Black River. And of course, at the Maritime Museum, we have boats, and we love sponsorships which help maintain these boats that we have. Kids programming. Like I said, we love having children in our museum. One of the events that we've been having for the past couple years is the Boat Building Camp. We have partnered with an organization in Charleston, and they come, and through the help of them and several other volunteers, we get kids learning lifelong skills, hands-on When I think summer at the Maritime Museum, I think sailing. We are celebrating 10 years of kids on the water at the museum. Every year, we welcome over 100 kids to our sailing program, learning this lifelong sport and growing an appreciation of water through donations from Bunnell Foundation, individuals, businesses. We have the opportunity to provide scholarships for those who otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to get on the water. We're proud to be bringing up the next generation of sailors in our community. Some of our instructors are kids who've grown up in our program, and we look forward to keeping that tradition alive with the next gen. These are our 420 sailing boats. As kids get older or more experienced, we offer this collegiate world-class boat for those sailors. We currently partner with a couple of high schools and their sailing teams to utilize these boats throughout the year. It is our dear hope for the future to continue to offer these to other schools and children in the area so that we can see these boats on the water all year long. Of course, I'd be remiss and probably get in trouble if I didn't mention the Georgetown Wooden Boat Show, which is our largest fundraiser for the museum. It's held annually the third Saturday and Sunday in October. This year, we're celebrating the 34th year through volunteers, which we have over 300. It's such a community organization event, and we look forward to seeing you all there. We have boats on the street, on the water, a boat building challenge, corrugated cardboard challenge, and lots of kids' activities as well. On that note, I want to thank you all for your time. It's an honor to share a little bit about what we do, and I look forward to seeing you all at our museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We'll move down to our public comments. A public comments period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that at the end of the time period, a buzzer will sound, and you are to end your comments at that particular time. There's a timer that's on the screen in front of you so that you can keep track of your timing. Please note that at the end of your allotted time, you need to end your comment. Okay? So we can all move forward with our meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signing for our public comment this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have 18 speakers signed up tonight. Each speaker will be allotted up to two minutes, and our first speaker is Jennifer Hunt.
Thank you. What is the person's name again? I don't think she's...
Jennifer Hunt.
Okay. Please note that you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. Two minutes is not enough. I am from Andrews, and I've been up here before, and I appreciate all your hard work. However, I am frustrated, like several of us are, but I want you to understand that we appreciate your work. And a few months ago, Georgetown County and Georgetown City had a meeting, I believe it was the end of April. I think that was a great start, a great start of communication. I had a very nice conversation with someone at a chamber event the other day, and I think he hit the nail on the head. I think a lot of people are trying to not hurt everybody's feelings. They don't want to hurt somebody's cousin's feelings, neighbor. Could we please have Andrews and Polley's Island, Georgetown City, and County, please come together and work together to try to remedy some of these communication issues? If I can help in any way, I am very happy to help. I run a little Facebook page called Andrews, South Carolina News, and I just got information on a job opening for Wingets. They have a warehouse manager position open that I will be putting on that website tonight, and it's $17 an hour, and I just told all of y'all about it. And if there is a way that Polley's Island, Andrews, Georgetown City, and Georgetown County could all get under one roof instead of phone calls and emails, I think that would be very beneficial for everybody, and thank you.
Charlie Rice.
It's Charles Wright. Mr. Chairman, members of the Plating Commission? I'm here to speak about rezoning request for Litchfield Oaks.
Will you please put your mic up? We can hardly hear you.
Charles Wright. I'm here to speak about the request for zoning of Litchfield Oaks. The rezoning is for a Monday through Saturday request for a farmer's market, which, as I've said prior, the interest of Litchfield Oaks Apartments has 192 units. Estimated that that's approximately 384 persons try to enter that. I have an office directly across the street since 1998. Litchfield Liquor Store has requested, this is their second zoning request, I respectfully ask that it be denied. I'm not sure we need another farmer's market. When I view that across the street, I think a farmer's market is something that brings crops, farm products to the table. I'm not sure that's what's going on over there, so my request is that they be denied. And the other thing is, you know, when people are out there with their tents and chairs and so forth, there's a beautiful historic oak that's on that property. You know, they've got all these tents and different structures that they say can be placed out there, so I'm just not sure that's really required for that location policy. Thank you.
Denise Miles.
My name is Denise Miles. I am from the western part of the county, over in the Pleasant Hill, Polly Grove area, and as I look around, I don't see a soul here. So I think I am here for something totally different than anybody else. I've been talking with Councilman Newton for the last year and a half to petition rural water on our road. We are on Tomahawk Street. Right now, there is water all around my road. I live on a road of about two miles. From the last time I talked with Tommy Kennedy with the Water and Sewer Board, he let me know that to service our road of about two miles, 14 houses, it would be about $167,000, which would be over $11,000 per household. That is way out of reach for our area. And to tell you why we need water, whenever we have a storm and our power goes out, we have no water at all because our well, you know, we have no electricity. So we have retired folks, veterans on my road, we have disabled folks on my road, and these men are out there pulling out generators to try to get water to the houses. I feel like it's a really small ask of the county to fund water for our road. And like I said, I've been to the board meeting with the Water and Sewer Board. Bunnell Foundation grants cannot help us. The community development block grants cannot help us. So I am here basically to put a face with all of the communication that I've had with Mr. Newton, to ask you all that if there's any money coming down the line, federal money, that you consider us and that we can get some water on our road. Thank you.
Kim Fox.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kim Fox, and I am the Executive Director of the Polley's Island-Litchfield Business Association, known as PILBA. I am here to speak for ordinance number 2318. Many of our member partners are challenged with finding employees mainly because of the lack of attainable housing in our county, especially along the Waukamunak. Many employees drive from our county to our county from Conway, Ener, Longs, Williamsburg County, and Myrtle Beach. Some 45... County, and Myrtle Beach, some 45 minutes to an hour. Because of the cost of gas and the wear and tear on automobiles, many quit their jobs to find something closer to where they live. Housing is Tidlin's Health and Georgetown County School District's number-one obstacle to finding educators, teachers, doctors, nurses, and other medical staff. Emergency room staff have to live within 30 minutes of the hospital. Georgetown County has had its challenges in hiring firemen and policemen. Georgetown County Economic Development is challenged in bringing businesses and other industry here that will help diversify our economy because we don't have the workforce to support them. An employee of one of our business members has been on a waiting list for an apartment in Georgetown for two years and a month ago just moved in. If we don't find a way to offer attainable housing to our workforce, our community and our county is destined to die. With our aging society, don't we want exceptional healthcare? In case of emergencies, don't we want immediate response from highly-trained and professional first responders? We are blessed to have many wonderful restaurants in our area, but I can't...
I'm Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. Did not plan on speaking at tonight's County Council meeting based on responsive and appropriate statements made at last month's meeting. Indeed, your actions generated applause from the audience and numerous thank you emails from your constituents. Appreciating your decision to modify the proposed amendment to the multi-family site plan review process. In reviewing tonight's agenda over the last few days, the proposed amendment change is sponsored by Council members Anderson, Carolina, and Luccato, appears nowhere within that document. The revised ordinance included in the packet dated July 25, 2023, today, was seemingly identical to what was offered on June 27. After much discussion at last month's meeting, the county attorney recommended that this amendment be deferred rather than voted on immediately so text changes could be made and properly reflect the wishes of County Council, which would then become law. Surely, there was ample time to effect those changes and present them in the context of the revised ordinance 23-18. I and much of the general public have concerns that the openness and transparency that was promised may not be delivered. Our expectations in advance of the actual third reading of that amendment to Article 7 later tonight are that it will reflect a revised ordinance that eliminates County Council but retains Planning Commission and public hearing for multi-family site plan reviews. Anything less than that would seem to be a broken prophecy. There has been some discussion that possibly the compromise solution will be presented as a formal amendment to the original ordinance 23-18 and voted on separately to be incorporated into the final ordinance. If that is the process that may occur later this evening, that would be welcomed. However, full openness and transparency would dictate that the general public has the right to know exactly what will be considered at this meeting.
Please conclude... Mr. Draper, please conclude your statement.
I'm Carol Barr and I am one of the vendors at Owens Liquor on Saturdays. And there are those of us who are very protective of those oak trees. My tent does not in any way infringe upon the health of those trees. We're very careful about that. And a lot of the vendors rely on this festival for our money. You know, we're on social security and this is what we do and I make a living. And it's fun and it's a family and it's a good time. Everybody respects everybody else. I don't understand why particularly the dentist is so against it because he's not open on two Saturdays a month when we're there. And it's just... Please don't take it away. I would appreciate you giving the second reading approval for all of us who depend on it.
Hello. My name's Judy Van Nord and I have a small baking home, baking business. And I'm retired and living on social security, like Carol said. I'm one of the vendors that... We are such a family-oriented group of people and it's... Everybody's been so helpful setting up. I have some physical impairments and stuff. Everybody, you know, just is wonderful. Everyone is well behaved. Nobody's defacing anything. Everybody cleans up after themselves. Really have gotten to have a real nice rapport with some of my customers and I have... And when I started the business, when I retired, I checked into some of the other wampirisms and things like that. I know myself, I live on social security. I can't afford over $100 to join a co-op for a year. And then every time you go to someplace, you're charged either another 20 or even more dollars, plus the fact of paying gas when you're traveling back. So that's why I'm really asking you to consider reading. Ray is really providing a wonderful opportunity for those of us who can't afford the large fees that some of these other places are charging. I just wanted to let you know I support Ray Strickland and Owens Liquor's ability to freely host vendor clubs and farmer's markets.
Gary Weinreich.
Thank you, Council. I want to briefly address several items on your agenda. Tree ordinance is much needed change and should be approved. You can greatly help Crystal improve enforcement if you would add a fine for tree service companies that remove a protected tree without first verifying that a permit's been issued. On the multi-family site plan reviews, Council did the right thing last month. You opted for transparency. You instructed the county attorney to revise the language. However, this month, the revised language is not included and despite numerous phone calls, no one responded. Way to earn trust is to say what you do and then do what you say. Thank you in advance for doing tonight what you said you would do last month. I think it's fair to say that everyone is confused about the status of the natural resource element. The planning staff, Matt in particular, were tireless. The Planning Commission unanimously approved it. The common courtesy and, again, transparency dictate that you inform the commission and the public of your reasons for remanding it. And finally, as I've said many times, there are three main things that the citizens from our county require, and that's honesty, transparency, and compliance with all of us. For some reason, this has been very difficult in Georgetown County. We've talked at length with your counterparts in other counties and towns. We have read the laws and the guidance. We have consulted with legal and regulatory experts. It's abundantly clear that Georgetown County is not complying with the Planning Act, the Clean Water Act, the Ethics Act, and requirements to keep our zoning up to date. Not one expert we talked to agrees with the county's position. But what are we doing? We're spending tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to defend our noncompliant practices. Is that really the way we want to move Georgetown County forward by item six?
To County Council, again, I come to you to appeal to you not to move, make any changes in the decision of Planning Commission and to that all Planning Commission's decision be made. We have been hurt by the decision that County Council made in the Boffel area by allowing power to be built that's above the median density range that is in our area. We have petitioned over 1,000, we have petitioned over 1,000 signatures that was acted on. I also want to voice my concern about sidewalks that were promised by a person who had no knowledge of Councilman more than 10 years ago. Nothing has ever been done yet, but a month ago, a young man that was killed at the corner of Boffel's building, Martin Luther King Boulevard, as he was on his bike going to work at night. Because on that corner, there was no streetlight. The streetlight was out and the person that was driving, tossing, not seeing a stop sign. During the past 10 years, there have been several people that have been killed in that area because of no sidewalk or streetlights on the corner. We are the only neighborhood in the Paulson area that have that problem and I wonder why. As long as there's no sidewalk or streetlight in the Boffel area, we are continuing to be heard, not filmed. And closely, one of our Councilman, Bob Anderson, and I thank him for his... We're motioning not to change the zoning for medium to high density. I hope that we do not take his advice back and fight the Council. I appeal to you to do the right thing to help us in the Boffel area. Help support the Paulson City Club, our working, the community, to help build social performance in our area.
Sandra Bundy.
Good evening. Thank you all for the work you do for this county. I know it is a sometimes thankless job. I served on the Planning Commission for the Merle Zinlai area and I'm here tonight asking you why you have not passed the natural resource element that was passed out of the Planning Commission unanimously. The work that this community, planners, Matt in particular, all the public input, now you have on your agenda tonight to defer it, or to send it back to the Planning Commission. How many times do we have to review it as citizens and how many times does the Planning Commission have to work on that one element? In case you are not aware, there are a number of grants that have zero match, which means that community groups could be going after these funds because our plan lays out what we could use. It is very frustrating to me, in particular in Merle Zinlai, because I know a lot of those things that y'all removed from the element that passed Planning Commission would specifically address clean water, trees, the stormwater issues, and a lot of other issues that we're having. And I really think if you're sending it back, you need to make clear what you didn't like about what was there.
Good evening, Council. Trapper Fowler, I'm the North Coast Project Manager for the Coastal Conservation League. Here tonight to largely say that we appreciate all the work that staff's done with these amendments for the proposed tree ordinance amendments. And we deem it crucial for you, Council, tonight to approve these amendments to help protect our trees and all the benefits that come from them. We fully support holding permits for two years if a protected tree is cut without permit, proper permit. This will hopefully help raise awareness and deter cutting all protected tree species, but especially those large grand trees that we've seen several be cut without permit, proper permit recently. For many developers, fines alone don't amount to much with what they stand to gain after developing the land. So maybe holding their field permit will help. There are other considerations, you know, that would be nice to incorporate, you know, I've seen there be mention of incorporating fines. I don't know how to handle that, but perhaps maybe a certain percentage could be left on the parcel or the landscape to deter some of the clear cutting. Maybe this could be in the form of buffer or, you know, clumps to provide some habitat. Just some ideas. Be happy to work with you on that. And certainly, longleaf. That's a species that has huge ecological significance, used to be very dominant in our area. So if nothing else, those. And then strengthening the protections for occupied single-family parcels. So largely here to say thank you for all you're doing and please approve these amendments as before you.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak again tonight. If you recall, the last meeting, I reviewed with you the input that you had received from the population here regarding the changes to Amendment 2318. At the end of that meeting, I was very pleased to hear what had been proposed there. It's a great response and it took into account the nearly, I think it was 103 people who sent in emails, as well as something like 1,400 who've signed petitions supporting those changes. I think I also suggested to you that you go read some of those emails. They were very passionate. They explained very well what the people believed, what the people wanted, why they wanted it, justifications for it. What I'm looking forward to here tonight, seeing that approved at the end of this meeting. That is what we need. That's what the people want. You get to demonstrate tonight whether or not you've heard the people or not. That is your choice. Make the right one.
My name is Rod Stalby. I'm a broadcaster. You probably know me. I own the two radio stations here in Georgetown. And I appreciate the opportunity that you've allowed me to speak. I don't know if two minutes is quite enough for me to give you a compelling reason why I'm here. I'm here on behalf of the longleaf pine tree. The longleaf pine tree is truly a contributor to habitat for some endangered species here in Georgetown County. At one time, it was a predominant tree here in the southeast and now it only represents I have a number of longleaf pine trees on my property and the recent tornado that came through on 5/21 three years ago destroyed a number of my longleaf pine trees. And one of them, took the time to measure, was 150 feet long and I counted the lines, 21 lines. And it was short of being a home for some red-cocketed woodpeckers. If you don't know the difference between a longleaf pine tree and a lob lily, just walk at the base of the tree and if there are large pine cones, you found a longleaf pine tree. If you live at Wilbrook and you see these huge squirrels, they're called fox squirrels. Their habitat is surrounded by longleaf pine trees. That's why you don't see them anywhere else in Georgetown County. So when you decide to amend the tree ordinance, strongly would appreciate, think about the longleaf pine tree and adding that to the list. I thought I didn't have enough time. Maybe I should tell a few jokes before I leave. Maybe I should tell a few jokes before I leave. Thank you for hearing me.
Tom Martin.
Good afternoon, my name's Tom Martin. I was down here on the May 9th council meeting, speaking to you about that beautiful 42-inch majestic grand oak tree that was cut down on the corner of Highway 17 in Litchfield, Maine. That's just north of the Hanser House on 17. I took it personally because I hear these stories of other people also taking trees personally and losing them. But we knew that tree was vulnerable because we saw a sale pending sign. In February, we brought it to the county's attention, and we still couldn't save it. To me, that's tragic, but it's also embarrassing as a government that we haven't been strong enough to take care of our vital resources. Now I'm down here just 11 weeks later, speaking and supporting the tree ordinance. I'm really pleased that Polly was able to pull this together, Councilor Mercado supported it, and I hope it passes. Increase in the fines to $500 per inch versus $500 per tree, hopefully that will be that deterrent to two years stop work order that Trappers had too. And he was great giving me advice along the way, too. Just a couple of things real quick, the single-family parcels I have handled, I provided to you. We think all the protected trees on the local, that should be just, not just the grand. And now in the rural areas, we think the grand should also be protected, at least. So I don't know why we wouldn't protect the grants in other countries. I would like to see the zoning department have more leverage in negotiation with the builders, so we'd like that message to go out to the builders. When you come in with a plan to remove the trees, you're going to be challenged on that. I would like the zoning department to be strong. County hotline should be also put in place, and also keep score on the trees saved.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you.
Lynn Ford.
Good evening, I'm Lynn Ford. To the members of county council and all concerned, I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Johnny A. Ford, who is the president of the Parksville Planning and Development Alliance. He would be here tonight, but work obligations prevent his presence. I'm not going to belabor the point. We stand in agreement with those who spoke before me regarding the deferred amendment. We are appalled at what's not happening right now. I grew up according to biblical principles, let your yes be yes and your no be no. To be a person of integrity and good character, you must keep your word. I thought this council's responsibilities were to represent the needs of the people, while the people have continuously spoken and are being continuously ignored. I feel as if I'm back in time, back in elementary school, where I read about the history books, how communities have been torn apart because the powers that be had their own agenda. But I'm not dreaming, and based on reality, on what I see today, I therefore have very little hope as far as this body is concerned that things will change. So all I can do today is implore you to simply do the right thing. Thank you.
Cindy Person.
Good evening. I couldn't agree more with Lynn Ford's sentiments. Last month, we were here, we publicly applauded Councilors Mercado, Anderson, and Carolina when they heard the voices of their constituents and expressed a desire to amend the GR ordinance to retain the public hearing. Ms. Mercado was very clear about exactly what she was asking, right down to citing the specific ordinance sections. Those council members, those three, wanted to make a motion to amend right then and there, but they were told that the matter needed to be deferred to give administration and legal counsel time to review it and update the ordinance language. As elected officials and members of the governing body, you had, and I'm sure you know this, you had every right to make that motion then and there, regardless of the administration's desires. But we certainly understand that deferring for the stated reason seemed to make sense at the time. And at the time, there was no reason to doubt that everybody would do what they said they were going to do. So here we are, a month later, the public has seen no updated ordinance or proposed amendment. We politely reached out to county officials with no response. So quite frankly, we don't know what to think. We don't even know what to, to ask this evening. The touchstone of democracy is government of the people, by the people, for the people. Your responsibility is to the people. We are the people. We implore you to build public trust and to protect your own integrity. Please follow through with your amendment to retain the planning commission public hearing, multi-family site plan reviews. Thank you.
Dia Daniels.
Good evening, I am Dia Daniels. I am an independent jewelry artist, and I have been a member of the group that works with Owens Liquors and with Ray Strickland down at the market. It is a wonderful opportunity for us. Again, I am another retired person. I spent 30 years in the field of nursing. Jewelry has been therapeutic for me, and now it is a visual income. Markets like the one at Owens are wonderful venues for artists and other venues for produce, and the food trucks are a wonderful addition. I really, really would love it if you would continue to provide support for the people of Georgetown County and vote to continue the market at Owens. Thank you.
William Cooper.
Good evening. I'd like to express my support for the council's earlier decision to defer the vote on removing meaningful public input on multi-family site plan reviews. Tonight's meeting revisits the issue. Our, at the time I wrote this, I do not see any mention on the agenda that addresses the concerns that were raised on June 27th. Those concerns were a possible lack of consistency and conflicts. If these issues have been discussed and acted upon, there is no indication on the agenda about what changes may have taken place. Of course, the overall concern is that the public as a whole is informed whenever such projects are brought before the county. Signs posted a few feet from the property in question, combined with short notices, do not allow enough time, all parties, to examine those. All such requests should be published in the local paper and the county website well before any hearing is scheduled. And with respect to the earlier comment regarding the necessity of workforce housing in Georgetown County, everyone understands the necessity of that. And having greater public input will encourage, rather than discourage, the construction of this. Many large housing projects say they are workforce housing, but in actuality, there's very little allowed as workforce housing, with most of them being market value greater. Thank you.
That's our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you all for your comments. We'll, we'll move on down to our consent agenda. There are two matters on the consent agenda were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Purchase of trace disposal property from State Port Authority in procurement number 23-044 excavator for the landfill. Then move on down to our public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. Orders number 23-21, an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and special source revenue credit arrangement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Zilmet USA Corp. Acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project companies collectively company, providing for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentive, providing for a special source revenue credit, creating a joint county industrial and business park between Georgetown County and Ori County, so as to designate the property of the project as part of the park. Authorizing execution and delivery of one or more grant agreements, authorizing the conveyance of certain real estates for Zilmet USA Corp. and other related matters. The floor is now open for comments regarding ordinance number 23-21. If there's anyone wishing to speak regarding it. Seeing none, public hearing for ordinance number 23-21 is now closed. We'll move on down to public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-25, an ordinance to adopt the 2023 economic development element off the Georgetown County Comprehensive Plan. Are there anyone wishing to speak regarding ordinance number, sign up to speak regarding ordinance number 23-25? The floor is now open. Seeing no one, the floor, the public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-25 is now closed. We move on down to resolutions and proclamations. Proclamation number 23-19, in recognition of National Overdose Awareness Month, and to declare August 2023 as overdose awareness month in Georgetown County, South Carolina. Ms. Roach Eckers, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, annually in the United States, the month of August is designated as overdose awareness month, and the Georgetown County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission has asked that we make that designation locally as well. Nationally, the overdose epidemic has taken a heartbreaking toll on our nation, and 2021, more than 100,000 people died from overdose in our country. This is an approximate increase of about 15% over the prior year, and unfortunately, this is a problem that we see locally as well. It hits in every corner of our community. It is not limited by race, by age, by economic status. So to raise awareness about this issue, we would ask that you consider approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Eckers, please? Seeing none, is there a motion pertaining to proclamation number 23-19?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve proclamation 2319, in the recognition of National Overdose Awareness Month, and, excuse me, 2319.
Thank you.
We move forward.
We have a, if a motion for adoption by Councilman Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move down to resolution number 23-20, authorization for the expenditures of American Rescue Act funds. Madam Administrator.
Actually, Mr. Ackerman is going to take this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number, I lost the number, but the resolution for consideration, 23-20, is for the continued use of a small amount, relatively small amount of ARPA funds to continue some incentivized bonuses to retain current employees. We started this last year, we'd like to continue it on, it's been very successful. Two particular classes that we're dealing with are paramedics, EMTs in our, in our fire and EMS services, and CDL drivers for various county departments. Total amount we're looking for is $142,940, as would come from existing ARPA funds.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ackerman?
Okay.
Uh, yes, I have, I have one. Mr. Ackerman, how will these, is it all going in bonuses, or their weekly, monthly paychecks, or how's this going to be distributed?
Two different methods for the EMTs and paramedics. One thing we found in, and I just, the last number I looked at, for the state of South Carolina, we are 6,600 and change short on paramedics right now. That's just paramedics. We have a difficult time in our state, as they do all across the country, finding these folks. And some of it, we, our regulatory bodies have done it to us, and some of it is just comes down to dollars and cents. So these folks would actually receive a bonus only when they are assigned to ride or operate the ambulance for that day. So all of our folks are dual-certified firefighter, paramedic firefighter, EMT. So if they're assigned to firefighting duties, they would not receive the bonus. If they are assigned to ambulance duties, they would receive the bonus. And for, and this would be on a bi-weekly basis. So they would report their time for the prior two weeks, and they receive it on their paycheck. For the CDL bonus, it is a quarterly bonus, up to $1,000 per individual, paid at a maximum of $250, and that's going to depend on how many years of service they have in the county. So the longer you've been here, the more you.
Thank you.
Baldwin, one question about the paramedics. You were saying when they're staffing the ambulance, what if they go to a wreck and have to climb on the ambulance? They're a certified paramedic that are riding on the truck. Would that qualify?
So, on a day-to-day basis, there are two folks assigned, so if they are assigned to that ambulance that day, if there's a major incident where we need to get an addition, honestly, if we got another paramedic that we can put on an ambulance, I would be ecstatic and over the moon. So it's normally going to be an EMT, but if a third person had to jump on that ambulance just to help out while they were riding to the hospital, that would not qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Well, could you share with us any creative things that we're doing, kind of looking outside the box and trying to attract EMT, EMS personnel to Georgetown?
So, multiple different things that we're doing. One of the most outside-of-the-box ideas actually came from you and I, and I appreciate the suggestion, Mr. Carolina. We have found that there is, for some strange weird reason, overabundance of certified paramedics in Australia, and they are desperately seeking work. Some of our surrounding counties have actually employed some of these folks. They come over for a committed three-year period on a work visa. The hope is, they like it here and they stay, but I, I don't know how they got an excess, but, but we're pursuing that avenue right now. The other thing we're doing, or another thing we're doing, is there is a new level of EMT that has recently been developed. South Carolina tends to lag, we're one of the last states to adopt things for whatever reason, and it's a level in between a basic EMT and a paramedic, it's called EMT advanced. And those folks are trained to do nearly everything that a paramedic can do, except for push a very small amount of medications, certain, a very short list of medications. They can do most everything else. So we are advancing the pay scale for folks that attain that level of certification. And then on the back end, we are actually working, our midway fire chief has a lot of inroads into DHEC state, and he's working with DHEC to make us one of the final states in the country to allow a bridge program from EMT advanced to paramedic, and we're doing in-house training for EMT advanced. So hopefully, we can move enough EMT advanced, or EMTs up to advanced, and then bridge them over to paramedics and dig ourselves out of the holdup.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Ackerman, Council? No. Okay. You have heard your report from Ms. Ackerman. Is there a motion regarding resolution number 23-20?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Bacatto, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Newton, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-18, an amendment to Article 6 requirements by district and Section 607 of the zoning ordinance dealing with two-family and multifamily development site plan reviews. Ms. Richardson. Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you, and good evening. As was stated, this issue was deferred last month. I won't go over the whole report as we have done that previously. Do want to highlight that this ordinance specifically affects the general residential zone properties throughout the county and those developments with more than 10 units or a net density greater than five units per acre. The change to the ordinance that's in your packet is highlighted at the bottom. It affects appeals to staff decisions. They will be handled in this proposal based on the procedure that's found in state law, and they are appealable to the planning commission, and this is the new section within 15 days of a staff decision. One other change there is that the state law has been referenced more specifically in that it only refers to Section C and D. Also, as you know, last month, an amendment was proposed and discussed that would address allowing the planning commission to be the final approval and the inclusion of a public hearing. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about the ordinance as listed or the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council?
As for clarification, for small projects, could you explain what the citizens' involvement would be on the smaller projects versus those development projects of 11 or more, 10 or more, as for in particular, the citizens' participation in the process?
Yes, sir. Under today's ordinance, the way it is today, smaller projects, meaning those with 10 units, multifamily projects with 10 units or less, or a net density of five units per acre or less, those are reviewed at the staff level. To be honest, we don't typically, I don't know that I've seen a multifamily projects with that small amount of use of units. Maybe a couple. We don't get very many of that small size. But right now, that would be handled at the staff level. There is no public notice, no public hearing, of course. Right now, anything over that, more than 10, with the net density greater than five, goes before the planning commission for a public hearing and then before this body for approval.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further comments from council?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, may I make a motion?
Sure.
A motion to amend the proposed revisions to ordinance 2318 that it require that all multifamily site plan reviews for developments greater than 10 or a net density greater than five units per acre, including plans for duplex, multifamily units, and townhouses have a public hearing and vote before the planning commission for final approval. The public hearing process shall follow the same notification process and procedures as the current rezoning process, in that they require that the multifamily site plan reviews for developments with 10 units or less or a net density of five units per acre or less be reviewed by planning staff, and the deletion of the section requiring appeals of staff decisions to the planning commission.
You have a motion from Counselor Carolina? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Anderson? Any discussion?
I've got a few comments, and most of them everybody's heard before. As I've said in the past, this is not about, this is not about the plan, the site plans. I'm probably the only one in this room that's ever drafted a site plan. They're complicated, and we all realize that, but that's not what this is about. This is about, this is about transparency and checks and balances. And as I look out here, and I've reminded all of my fellow counselors of this, the day you signed up and were sworn in, you went from having 9,000 constituents to having 65,000 constituents. This is a small portion of those folks out here. They're the ones that elected us, and they're the ones that can take us down. So please keep that in mind, and remember that this is not about, about site plan review. This is about transparency. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson, let me just say, as far as the, as far as this particular ordinance go, does it pertain to a site plan or does it pertain to something else?
This would be the site plan, the initial conceptual plan. Construction plans would come later in the process, once they had achieved their DEHEC permits, for example, encroachment permits, then construction plans are reviewed by staff. This is the initial approval for density, for setbacks, for landscaping, for trees, those kind of things.
And you may have stated it before, this site plan basically pertains to whether they have followed all the zoning ordinance of the county, of the regulations by the county. That's all the site plan's about?
That's correct. These are properties that are already zoned for high-density development, so the review is limited to those regulatory requirements.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Is this the amendment?
Well, we first have to, yes, it's the amendment, I'm sorry, it's the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. If you oppose? Amendment dash. Going back to the, to the original motion, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 23-18?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 23-18.
The motion from Counselor Newton, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 2318 to incorporate the amended text?
What?
It's a motion to amend ordinance number 2318 to incorporate the amended text. I stated in the agenda.
Well, that's, that's what we just voted on.
No, it's not. The amended text is in the agenda, it's different from...
The text in the agenda is, should be what was in the, on the agenda last time. It shouldn't have changed.
I think you have to do the ordinance first, then the amendment.
No, then we'd be voting on the, let's ask council. What process do we take, council?
Let's get it right.
You had a, so you had a motion that would amend the ordinance as presented, that motion failed. Now you're to the amendment, or excuse me, to the main motion without amendments from the motion that was presented, but the amendment, or the main motion, excuse me, the main ordinance or change is an amended text. I think that's what you're referring to, is it, Mr. Chairman?
That is correct.
All right, so what you're moving now is to adopt the amended text as presented, is that?
That is correct.
All right, so I think that's where the confusion came in, is using the language amendment, but it is an amended text in the main motion. So whether you're voting on the amended text or on the main motion, either one, I think it gets you there.
Thank you.
So we're, we're getting ready to vote on the amended text, not, not the amendment that Mr. Carolina made.
That is correct.
So would you refresh my memory with the difference between what was in the original text last month and what this amended text is now, because we've just complicated by a factor of 10?
The, the original last month was an amendment to an existing ordinance. Then there was the discussion about motions, that was cleared up and brought back this time. The only change to this one as presented, the motion as presented, without the emotion that, or without the amendment Ms. Carolina moved, is that in the appeals part, the prior one had a reference to a statute, I think it's, was it 29-1150, I believe, 6-291150. There is an addition of subparts C and D simply to narrow down where to reference in that statute number. And then also, because it follows the language for the appeals process of that statute, but the statute with regards to appeals from staff decisions was silent on time, there was an insertion of 15 days. The statute does reference time limits for, say, appeals to circuit court or other appeals, but it was silent on that. So there's a 15 days for appeal of staff decisions. Those are the only two changes.
Well, that's a little complicated for me. I had the impression that we were, we were amending the same text as what was available last week. It's a lot better. In fact, I look at these footnotes down here, and we're calling for a motion, and a second, and a discussion, and we're calling for a motion to amend and discussion, and then vote on that amendment and call for third reading and approval. And I thought that's where we were. So...
No, what he did, he made a motion to amend, which is not the same motion, which is not the same amendment that's within the package.
I understand that, I understand that, but what, what's happened is that we've, we've got a double complication here, in that we, we thought we were amending the original text that was in, was, was on the agenda from last month, and we're not. We're, we're amending, an amended text from last month. And, so I'm going to make a motion to table this. Have I got a second? Second.
Yep. Well, we first have a motion, well, we first have a motion on the floor now for the original, we have an original motion on the table that's been second. So obviously, we cannot make a motion, this is the time to table it. And we have now calling for a motion to amend the, the original ordinance, number 23-18. So I don't think we can have a double motion on the floor unless it's a motion to amend the original ordinance.
Following that, I think you're correct, yes, sir.
We have a pending motion on the floor already for...
Correct.
For approval of ordinance number 23-18, and we have a second regarding that particular one. And we now have a motion to amend that particular ordinance to incorporate the text, and Mr. Anderson now is asking that we can have a motion to table, and I'm thinking this out of order because we have a motion already on the floor.
You have a motion pending on the floor, yes, sir.
Well, what I'm not seeing is, I'm not seeing the text, I'm not seeing the text here from what we had as the text during the last, the last meeting.
It's on your agenda.
At 607.41, it's the appeals.
It's on your agenda.
It's, it's within your agenda package. If you look at the ordinance, it's 607.41.
Okay, I guess I read that, I read the, what was the text that was in the agenda, and I just made the assumption that it was the same text that we had seen at the last meeting.
No, it's not.
So...
The amend, the...
Sorry, next to...
So let me ask you this, then.
It's on the table now.
Let me ask you this, then. So the amendment that we're, that we're discussing here is what you incorporated with, I guess, without my knowledge, because obviously, I'm in the middle of this. So the text that you amended was the text from the last meeting, and so what we just voted on was, was not that. It was, it was, it was something else that I didn't even know existed.
Mr. Chairman, could you read the highlighted amended change?
The amended change in 607.41 of the proposed ordinance, it speaks of appeals, it says appeals. An appeal of staff decisions to approve or disapprove a land development plan under this ordinance, Article 6, Section 607, may be taken by party in interest within 15 days of staff decision under the procedure provided in SC Court 6-29-1150, C and D.
And I assume that that was the same text that was in the month before.
No, it's not.
Yeah, well, I understand that now. Pardon? No, I understand, I understand what's happened, but I made an assumption that, that we were amending the same text tonight that was in, was in, was in the agenda last time.
No. Okay. Going back to the motion to amend, did we get a motion for amend ordinance number 23-18 to incorporate the amended text?
I made the motion, Counselor Johnson seconded it.
Okay, that's the original motion.
Original motion.
That's the original motion. Okay. Is there any discussion regarding the original motion? Let's go back to the original motion. Is there any discussion regarding the original motion? Okay, now, okay, now, so is there a motion to amend ordinance number 23-18 to incorporate the amended text, which was just read into the record?
The amended text that was, that's in the, at the agenda here.
Oh, that's on the agenda, that's correct.
Yeah, right. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's removed by Counselor, Counselor Newton is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. We first go through the amended text.
Point of order. So what happens to my motion to, to table?
There's a motion.
I did check, and a motion to table can be made, and it will override pending motions. So I would suggest that you act on Mr. Councilman Anderson's motion to table.
Okay.
Act on that motion, and then depending on the outcome of that, you can either table or move back to the pending motion.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to Councilman Anderson's motion to table. We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Anderson to table. We have a second by Counselor Carolina. Any discussion regarding the motion to table? Okay, hearing done. All in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hand. All counselors opposed to the motion to table, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Now, we'll go back to our original motion that we've had, and the amended motion to incorporate the incorporated text, to incorporate the amended text. Okay. Any discussion regarding the amended motion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the amended motion to incorporate the proposed text, please raise your hand. Five. Any of those who oppose, please raise your hand. Two. Motion carries. Now we go back to the original motion inclusive of the amended, incorporated text. All in favor of the main motion with the incorporated text amended, yeah, let's, let's, let's go back. All of you, all of you who are in favor of the main motion which incorporate the proposed text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Motion carries, that's opposing the agenda. We move on down to ordinance number 23-21. We move on down to ordinance number 23-21.
Give him a chance, please. Give him a chance.
You turn, Seth. Can you turn his speaker? More noise than they've ever heard. Okay, we'll, we'll continue. And we're going down to third reading of ordinance number 23-21. Ms. Harrison, you tell us what it's all about.
Good evening, members of council. Hope everyone's doing well. This is third reading of an ordinance to provide for a.
Ms. Harrison, could we get you to speak into that? We're having a hard time hearing up here.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm usually really loud. All right, I'm gonna try again. This is third reading of an ordinance to provide for a fee in lieu of tax incentive and a special source revenue incentive for a project formerly identified as Project Hooper. This is an economic development project. There have been no changes to the project or to the incentives since my report at second reading. However, I believe Mr. Watson does have something that he would like to add.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harrison. Council, in the proposed ordinance for the FLO, there is a reference, it's one of the paragraphs that references an inducement resolution adopted by the council on June 27th of this year. That inducement resolution was not adopted by the council. And the reason for that, I think part of the, the history behind this is that it was anticipated that it would be early on when these FLO documents were being generated. However, in some of the discussions about how this was going to be structured, there was a question about whether some other mechanisms, mechanisms for funding or, or not funding, but for the, the FLO agreement would be used that would not have required the, the inducement resolution. And so this is some language that's left over, you know, prior to the, the final. So we will simply need to make a, an amendment so that, right now it states pursuant to an inducement resolution adopted by council on June 27th, 2023, we will simply change that, that paragraph to say the ordinance which you're adopting constitutes the inducement resolution for purposes of the act. The act being the, the legislative act that authorizes filos. And that should correct it and get, get it correct in the ordinance itself. So if you approval, with your approval of that text change, you'll be good to vote on this for third reading. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Harrison? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 23-21?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Anderson is there second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercado. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 23-21 to incorporate the amended text?
Removed.
It's removed by Counselor Mercado's there second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Anderson. Is there any discussion regarding the amended motion? Let's first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Now we'll go back to the main motion. All in favor of the main motion with the incorporated text, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go down to ordinance number 23-22. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is an ordinance to rezone approximately 41 acres that are located on the southern side of the CSX Railroad, just off Green Bay Drive near Andrews. From forest agriculture to heavy industrial. We haven't had any changes to this request since the second reading approval. The future land use map does designate this property as industrial because it is adjacent, of course, to the Georgetown County Industrial Park. So no change to the future land use map is needed. The planning commission held a public hearing on this issue on June 15th. No one but the applicant came forward to speak and they have unanimously recommended approval for the rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question, Ms. Richardson?
Ms. Richardson, just one question. Will there be access to this parcel from the north on Green Bay Drive?
I do not believe so. I think it'll be through Technology Drive.
Okay, Technology Drive only?
Yes, sir, I think so.
Any further questions from Ms. Richardson from council? Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-44?
Mr. Chairman, I moved. Do we approve ordinance number?
I'm sorry. Ordinance number 23-22, I'm sorry.
I moved that we approve ordinance number 23-22.
We have a motion from Counselor Newton is there second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Elliott, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. And we'll move on down to second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 22-44. An amendment to the Georgetown County Conference of Plan Natural Resource Element. See, we have a recommendation to table this particular ordinance. Second, correct. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
A motion to table from Counselor Newton is there second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion?
I've got a question. Why, why are we tabling this? Can you remind me, Holly?
I think this was deferred by council so that it could come along with the completion of the land use element of the comp plan and rather than leave it on our deferred list, it was recommended that it be tabled. Is that correct?
So this table is going to last maybe months, eight weeks? What are we looking at? How long is it going to be tabled?
I think the land use settlement process will go through the fall, so we would bring it back up once we are nearing the completion of that process.
Is that fall, September or October or?
Well, I think the process will probably take through the fall, so we're probably more looking at November, December.
That's kind of winter, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't, I couldn't let you get away with that.
Through, through the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We'll go down to ordinance number 23-23. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is a request from Brook Bristow of Bristow Beverage Law LLC. He's the agent for Owens Holdings. And the request here is to rezone 2.5 acres from general commercial or GC to a flexible design district, an FDD. This property is located on Ocean Highway in Polley's Island. They currently contain a liquor store and associated parking. The request tonight is to establish a farmer's market and have multiple vendors on the site in addition to the existing retail business that's there. This parcel contains about two and a half acres. It does meet the two acre minimum that's required for an FDD zoning district. The surrounding zoning is multiple uses and multiple districts. We have MR10, general commercial, planned developments, and some general residential that is located to the east across the highway. Some history on this site, this parcel was originally part of the Litchfield Oaks Plan Development where the apartments are and the other businesses that are located off Otis Drive. In 2016, a food truck vendor attempted to amend the PD to allow for vendors on this property and that request was denied. A few years later, in 2020, the applicant, along with three other parcels in the PD, filed a request to be removed from the PD and to be rezoned to general commercial. And that approval was given by council in September of 2020. The zoning ordinance currently allows for vendors, it allows for them as conditional uses in both the forest and agriculture and the general commercial districts. However, in the Walkman Net Commercial corridor overlay, of which this parcel is of course part, we only allow for one vendor per parcel. We also do allow for a one day special event permit for commercial parcels. And those are more for infrequent one-time events that generate less than 400 people. Those events may have multiple vendors for a one day, not to exceed 24-hour event. The FDD section of our ordinance does require a narrative from the applicant that addresses how this project would better impact the natural and human environment than a more typical commercial development. The applicant did submit that as part of their packet. They intend to continue the existing use as a retail liquor, beer, and wine store. And they also plan to use the property in to better the community through the support of local vendors in the form of special events, vendor appearances, and other events featuring local businesses, including a farmer's market. They have proposed hours of operation from Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM based on the farm availability and allowing for a flexible schedule. The application from the owner indicates working with 20 to 35 vendors at any given time. The site currently has 80 parking spaces. And based on our calculations, that would accommodate the existing retail store as well as the appropriate parking that's needed for up to 30 vendors. A site plan is included in your packet that shows a maximum of two food trucks and 30 vendors for the farmer's market. The vendor participants will each have their own designated area. They will be limited to the use of a table and/or a tent that would not exceed the size of 10 by 10. And those tents and tables will be removed each day at the end of the market. They have not applied for any new commercial structures to be built, no permanent structures or no change or altering of the existing structures, nor are there any plans for removal of trees or extension of utilities. Midway Fire has reviewed the plans and have indicated that the owner would have to comply with all the fire code regulations, which include things like spacing, fire protection, storage, and emergency vehicle access. Georgetown County Water Sewer District has also reviewed the plan and issued a conceptual approval for the location of the two food trucks on the site. Signage has not been addressed as part of the plan. Staff has made some recommendations for signage that are listed in number 15 of your report. This property is already designated for commercial development on the future land use map, so no map amendment is needed there. The planning commission specifically asked staff to contact the sheriff's office regarding ingress and egress for the site. They did have some concerns about the ability of the customers and public safety officials to get in and out of the site at that location. They also mentioned some concerns about the consumption of alcohol on the site along with the presence of the food truck vendors. Staff proposed that if this is approved, the conditions that are listed in number 18 be included in the ordinance. Planning commission reviewed this project twice. They first held a public hearing on May 18th where one spoke, person spoke against it. The planning commission deferred the request at that time. They came back on June 15th, held a second public hearing where an adjacent property owner spoke against the request based on his concerns for parking and ingress and egress. At that time, the commission made a motion to deny the request with three in favor of the motion to deny and three members abstaining. A second motion to approve the request but to limit the number of vendors to 15 failed with a vote of two to four. So we're coming to you unfortunately with no clear recommendation for the planning commission on this request. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council for Ms. Richardson?
I've got several, actually. Holly, do, what, like a beer truck or a refrigerated trailer serving alcohol, would that be classified as a vendor or would that be in the food truck?
I would interpret that to be a food truck. The, the site plan as it's shown only shows a farmer's market area in one location and then the food trucks in another location. So I would classify that as, as one of the food trucks.
Would they be allowed to sell alcohol under the onsite consumption license?
It's my understanding that Owens has an onsite license, an on-premise license at this time and that they serve people there at the building. At the planning commission meeting, the attorney stated that they, that that license restricted them to the building. I don't, I don't know that based on personal knowledge, but that was how their attorney presented it, that that wouldn't apply in the food truck section.
So if they were, if they were to bring in a, say, a food, or beer truck, that would, they'd have to get their own special permit from everybody to sell alcohol?
Potentially, although I'm probably really not the best qualified to answer that. Now, that would probably involve SLED or the ABC Commission.
Okay. Can that site actually support 30 vendors?
Staff has concerns about that. I don't know if you've driven by that there is a retention pond in the front. There's also a very large oak tree. Not only is it large, but its limbs also touch the ground in that instance. So staff did have concerns about 30 vendors going there. There's a site plan in your packet that shows the 30 vendors, but we don't really see the layout of that tree. And I think that's why the planning commission initially proposed that reduction to 15 vendors.
Okay, the, um, walk, kind of walk me through the parking. Each vendor has to have two parking spaces. That means that for each vendor, they can have up to two customers parking. Is that, am I interpreting that right?
Well, the, the parking requirement in our zoning ordinance is for two spaces per vendor. I guess you could assume that one of, one of those might be that the vendor himself has a parking space and then one is for the customer.
Okay.
But that's what the requirement is.
That's kind of where I was going with it. The 30 vendors, say each one drove one car, that's 30 spots gone right there. They've got 19 spaces for the store and includes employees. So say six or eight employees, that's going to knock out 11. So if they were to have some sort of festival there, like a one-time event, where are those people going to park at?
Well, again, the, based on our ordinance, the 80 spaces that are there should accommodate the liquor store use and the 30 vendors. Again, that's based on our ordinance requirements. And then in terms of overflow parking, if there are only two food trucks on that site, I guess there would be the potential for additional parking on that grass area. And it looks like on the site plan, there is an area to the rear of the track that could potentially accommodate overflow parking. It's our understanding there's not an agreement with the adjacent property owners for the utilization of their parking lot. So it, it would have to be restricted to the liquor store track.
That's what I, I was at that meeting and I, I remember that, him saying he wouldn't allow that. Do the food trucks have to break down and vacate every, every day or are they allowed to stay there overnight?
That's a good question. The ordinance as it's written right now says that the vendors have to break down and remove every night. So I would include the food trucks there and assume they would have to remove. I, I know, I think Mr. Owens has from time to time parked a food truck in that, in the back rear of the lot. I don't know that we'd have an opposition to that if it, if it was moved back there as long as there wasn't an ongoing event, you know, going on where that truck was taking up spaces that were needed for the parking.
So technically, if he, if it's an onsite truck and it's not going anywhere, then it could be classified as an outdoor restaurant?
I guess from a zoning perspective, we're still going to treat that as a vendor. So if, if this FDD approval is granted, then he would be approved for the retail liquor store, to food truck vendors, and the farmer's market. So that would become the list of uses for this flexible design district. We wouldn't refer to it as a, as a restaurant, but I guess in real life, I mean, if there's a picnic table there and they're eating, you know, outside. And again, he can have one vendor there now, under a vendor's permit. They can get a permit for 90 days or a year. It's just the fact that Mr. Owens is requesting to have multiple vendors on the site, which isn't allowed in the overlay. And that's part of the reason for the rezoning to the FDD.
As far as the special events go, there, is there a designation for infrequent? I mean, is there some, once a month, once every six months, two a year, three a month?
There's not a definition for infrequent in our zoning ordinance. I think in past conversations with Mr. Strickland, we have referred to twice a month at, at a maximum. If we're going to classify him as those special events, zoning has taken that interpretation to a month.
Okay. Yeah, my, my concerns are basically just the traffic going in and out of there. And I've got no problem with the farmer's market and the, you know, the arts and crafts thing. I've got zero problem with that. Where my problem runs into is special events going in there and all of a sudden you've got 400 people with nowhere to park and overflow and they're clogging up an already congested area down there. That's, that's my only concern with that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
I had a question along the same lines. Remind me, refresh my memory on, what did we do on the traffic study on this?
Traffic study was not required. A traffic study is required for over, when something generates over 500 trips per day. A traffic study is required for over, when something generates over 500 trips per day, and we did not estimate that for this proposal.
You really have no way to do that, I understand that. So, um, as I recall, there's not a traffic light at that little intersection?
No, sir.
Is there a break in the median?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've got wall-to-wall traffic seven months out of the year now through there. And we don't, we really don't have a way to judge what the traffic's going to be in and out. So we probably would need some kind of a traffic signal there to make things safer. But do you know offhand if, where the closest signal is to that intersection? And would it, would it be, would it take away the ability for DOT to approve a traffic signal there just because of the distance to the next one up the road? Am I making sense to you?
The closest one would be Willbrook, I believe. I don't know of any plans, Mr. Anderson, for a signal at that location. I'm not aware that that's on, on the list. I would have to check with DOT to check on their separation requirements.
Yeah. We've heard it before, but it's not something that would, that I, that I store in my shallow memory bank.
I mean, I know one has been discussed at other locations like Litchfield Country Club and, and, you know, the potential for moving that light, but I don't know that there've been discussions of putting one at that location that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was there on last Saturday, and it was a very quaint farmer's market with some arts and crafts, maybe a max, max of 10 tables, a few tents. I had no idea that they were asking for 25 to 35 vendors to be there. I mean, I'm just looking at this site plan. I'd be concerned about ingress, egress, people turning left out of there. The parking is a, is a big issue that has been brought up. I think there's a concern with the sheriff's department. This is pretty concerning. And this is in my district.
Good. Stella, could we, for the time being, could we amend this? Change it from 30 to 20 to make it more powerful concerning the traffic and see how that goes?
I would.
And if it's, if it's a problem, revisit it? Can that be done at a later date?
I guess my question would be on the FDD. Are we able to limit the number of vendors?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's an FDD.
Okay, so what I saw Saturday was about 10. And there was plenty of parking. I went there about 11 o'clock. I didn't see any issues coming in and out. I, you know, I live right up the street. I know this is, there is a cut through right there on 17. I think traffic would be a concern. Did I also hear you say that it was Monday through Saturday, and what was the times?
Nine to seven.
So they would want to do that every single day?
Um, I think they want the flexibility to do it on different days. I think their narrative indicated that it would be unlikely that they would do that every day, but based on farm schedules, I think that's why they wanted to leave that open that way. I don't think they've been operating, you know, those days to my knowledge.
So if they're currently not allowed to operate with multiple vendors, have they been cited?
They have not received an official citation. And again, some of those probably fall under what we're considering the special event. But beyond that special infrequent event that we talked about, they should be limited to one vendor, yes, ma'am.
I'd be concerned about every single day of the week except Sunday and the amount of requests for vendors. That's, that's very concerning. Could put this picture, I know it's for public, but I wish we could put this picture up for everybody.
Holly, if we do approve this, say, just for craps and giggles, we do approve it for, say, 20 vendors, but then we find out that it becomes a problem. Do we have any recourse to draw that back to solve that problem other than nuisance? Or is it pretty much we pass and we're stuck with what we passed?
Um, I think you might, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head, have two ways to go at it. I mean, maybe you could draft the ordinance such that limit it to this number, but if, I don't know how you would catch it, but i- if there are legitimate public safety complaints or concerns, then staff would be authorized to back it down to a certain number. Also, and council has the authority to initiate a rezoning. I don't, that is certainly very rarely done, but I would think that council could potentially initiate to rezone the property back to its general commercial status if there was overwhelming concern. You know, if council took it upon itself to do that, that would be pretty rare, but I suppose it's possible, possibility. And then that would take away the ability to have the multiple vendors repeatedly.
I think this is one of these things we're not going to know until we try. And I think the 20 to 20 vendors is a nice medium from the requested and the suggested 15.
I think it's, it's in the, in the ordinance. They, you already reduced it to 15, right?
Um, I think that was a Planning Commission motion that, that didn't pass. But 15 has been floated around as a reduced number.
Okay, because I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance right now, and it's bullet point two. The site will be limited to a maximum of 30, and then 30 struck through in 15 vendors.
Oh, you're correct, yes, sir. I think that was reflecting that, that motion that was made. Again, the Planning Commission made no motion, so we had to draft an ordinance based on that language. And I guess that was changed based on the number that came through.
Okay, so if we, if we approve this ordinance, it would be for 15 vendors?
That's correct.
Okay.
You need to amend to change it from 15.
Can we amend it?
That includes the two food trucks within that 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I wanted to address a couple of comments that were made. Ms. Elliott, you asked about whether if we did this, could we then come back and undo it? And, sorry, Mr. Newton. You asked about whether we could, the, the council could come back and undo it if it didn't work out. And I think, Mr. Newton, you made a comment about, well, we don't know unless we try. Just simply want to remind you, this is an ordinance, so it is law for Georgetown County. All right, so under equal doctrine, or equal dignity doctrine, if, if you pass an ordinance, it's going to take an ordinance to undo it with all that that means, first, second, third readings, things like that. So just be mindful of what you're doing. If you have some concerns, think it through. I'm not telling you not to do it or to do it, but simply because of some of the comments and questions, just remember, this is an ordinance. And so you're going to have to go back through the process to back it up if you decide later it's not working, all right?
That's correct. We would have to run, take it, I mean, you could initiate it, but we'd have to take it through the Planning Commission for a recommendation, advertise, same process.
So if it becomes an issue, it could technically take, what, three to four months before we even see it? And then it would have to go through first, second, third reading?
Yes. I mean, the process itself would take three months.
Well, I think, I think maybe we're, we're leaving out the, the business owner here. I don't personally know them, but I think if it becomes a problem, there's a good chance that they could address it on their own and reduce, reduce the numbers. I don't think they want a, a business that has a traffic jam or, or causing problems for the neighborhood.
Council would like to hear from their business owners regarding the traffic.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you, my name.
What's, what's the specific question we have for them?
Could, if, if, if this became a problem, a nuisance for the community, for the whole area, would it be in the best interest of your business to take care of the problem yourself by reducing the number of vendors that you have on site? Or would we have to address it?
We would, or I would address all concerns, but I do have one comment. The July 4th weekend is our busiest, can you hear me okay? July 4th weekend is our busiest weekend of the year. We hosted 30 vendors, three food trucks, no issues with parking, no issues with traffic. I've also contacted DOT about what we're doing. I've addressed the traffic light. They said we are having no, no impact on what we're doing at Owens Liquors with our vendors. Now, I did ask for Monday through Saturday from nine to seven. It, having 30, 20, 10, 15 vendors every day is not something that we want. We just want the ability, if we have a produce farmer that can't make it on a Saturday, but they can make it on a Tuesday, we would accommodate those farmers for those vendors. Or if we had a hurricane that was going to hit Friday and Saturday, well, we'd want to have it earlier in the week. You know, it's, our intention is to support small business. And to be honest, we've been doing this for over a year, and we have had no problems hosting 20-plus vendors two times a month. Is there any questions that I can help answer? I know, I know Mr. Elliott had some comments. I, I would like to address you specifically if you had questions about what we're doing.
Yes, sir, yes. Mostly my concerns are going to be as far alcohol related. I've talked to the sheriff, he actually called me this afternoon and was talking to me about it. He's, he's very concerned about consumption of alcohol on the premises.
Okay, I can, I can answer that. Farmer's market themselves, with the, the beer truck on site doing that, that's never going to happen. We do serve beer in the store. We do have an on-premise license that allows people to carry their beer or wine on the property. I discourage anybody that takes beer into the farmer's market area, but we don't prevent it.
Okay, so they could technically buy it in the store and take it?
They, we say don't, and I'm working on getting signs posted. But as you well know, we're not law enforcement. You know, we can only ask if, please don't do this. Over the years, or over the year that we've been doing it, people have, you know, taken their beer into the farmer's market, and it has not been a problem for over a year. I'm not sure why that's being brought up now. You know, if we were doing something illegal or wrong, I'm sure Carter Weaver would have addressed me earlier, or he has a problem with traffic. He would, he should have said something earlier. Like I said, it's been over a year, no issues. And now you're coming up saying that there's issues that could possibly happen. Hammock shops, they do it every Sunday, and they've had, they have over 20 vendors. Nobody said anything about hammock shops. Why is it Owens? Why is it us?
I think a lot of it's just the area.
I have a question.
Anderson.
My question is this, if you, it sounds like you've been doing this for over a year. Why are you here asking for our consent to do something else?
That was, Holly could probably answer that. We were guided by them to proceed this way.
Because Mr. Strickland wants to, like he said, have the flexibility to do this on multiple days, beyond the time the infrequent special event would limit him to, as we've stated, twice a month. And again, anytime he wants to have more than one vendor that doesn't fall under those special events, then the ordinance is going to prohibit him from doing so.
So he wants to loosen the reins, those are my words. You can respond to that, sir.
Can you explain exactly what you're asking?
Well, that, that means we're going to, we're going to let you expand your flexibility.
Well, I guess you can look at it that way, but like I said, we've been doing this over a year, and there hasn't been an issue.
Well, here's, here's the problem we have. As, as our, Mr. Watson reminded us, we have to be very definitive in our ordinances, particularly to protect, well, to protect everybody, particularly our, our sheriff's department. You know, they, they've got to know what, what, you know, what are the limits here? And, and if we start trying to do something that's not definitive, it's going to end up like another thing we've got going on right now in Merle's Inlet and every boat landing in this county. And some of you know what I'm talking about, right, Mr. Clint?
I do.
So that's, that's, that's what I'm concerned about as far as whatever we do. If I'm going to vote for it, it's got to be definitive.
I agree.
I actually agree with Counsel Anderson. I don't understand why there's a request to change a zoning if you've been doing it for over a year and you're having success with the farmer's market. It just doesn't make sense, and you have the vendor, the number of vendors that you want.
It's based on.
And you've had success from your word, so I, I just, now I'm confused, now I'm even more confused.
Exactly. You know, we are reacting to what we were told from zoning.
And it's due to the infrequent, the two per month?
Right, it was our understanding that they wanted to have more of a permanent farmer's market allowed, and the, the zoning ordinance required, allows for one principal use per lot. So for him to go beyond the idea of the special event and have a permanent farmer's market with those established hours is not provided for in the ordinance. The FDD was the only method for him to get, to achieve that goal.
We want to do things correctly and right. We don't want to skirt anything.
I guess, you know, again, the request to change zoning, but also expand, you know, Monday through Saturday, seven to whatever the time was, you know, 35 tents, two food trucks. I mean, I just.
That wouldn't happen every day.
When I went, it was, like I, like I told you, it was, it was a nice event. It was, sounds like it, it was an infrequent event. It was lovely, you had great vendors. It was a nice farmer's market with some crafts, it was great. But that, that change to zoning is concerning now after seeing the site plan and some of the concerns that have been shared and the questions that have been asked.
Now, we can, we, we have supported, and we can support 30. My intention really is I'm going to, I would keep it around 20. You know, 30 is kind of large. I mean, we can support it, and we've proved that we can. But 20 is very manageable. And when you were there, there was about, there was between 10 and 15, it was close.
Yeah.
It was close.
I was thinking.
And another five more, or another 10 more than what was there, still plenty of parking. Actually, the community has pushed me for over six years to get this done. You know, I'm acting on behalf of them and the vendors. I mean, I know it's confusing that, you know, that, that we're here today, and we've been doing this for a year or more. This fight started back in 2016.
Let's, let's go ahead and move forward. I think we've had some discussion on it, and we can make a decision whether we want to approve it or deny or bring the motion forward. Thank you for your assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys' efforts.
Okay. Okay, we are going back to ordinance number 23, dash 23. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 23, dash 23?
Mr. Chairman, I moved it. We, we approve ordinance number 23, dash 23.
Okay, a motion from Counsel Newton, approval of ordinance number 23, dash 23. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Carolina. Any discussion? I think we've had enough discussion on that, huh?
Oh, one question. If we're, we're approving it by the ordinance, we're approving it for 15 vendors, correct?
15 vendors.
Okay.
Every day of the week except Sunday.
Right. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries, that's second reading. Let's move on down to ordinance number 23, dash 24.
I know, a bunch of them.
We move on down to ordinance number 23, dash 24. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This is the proposed changes to the tree ordinance that have been recommended by the Planning Commission. This affects Article III and Article 13 of our zoning ordinance. We last amended this ordinance in 2021 when we added protections for tree canopy and decreased the minimum size of a grand tree from 30 inches to 24 inches. Our zoning department receives numerous calls about trees. I'm sure you all received numerous calls about trees, especially ones that are removed without a permit. Currently, we invoke a $500 per tree penalty for when trees are removed without a permit. Recent actions have shown that this fee is not significant enough to serve as a detriment to tree removal. Planning staff met with Mr. Watson to discuss being able to increase the penalty provisions, and the attached ordinance reflects those changes after review of several other jurisdictions' The enforcement section is basically in three parts. The first part includes a fine that would be assessed at $500 per caliper inch for the removed tree. If the size of the tree cannot be determined, meaning the stump has already been removed or we don't have a survey, then it would be based on the minimum size for a grand tree, which is 24 inches. And they will also be required to plant replacement trees for the tree that was removed, and if there's not sufficient space on site for the replacement trees, they would have to put that money towards a tree fund. Also, we have included the provision that Mr. Fowler referred to where no permit will be issued for the site for a period of two years from the date of the discovery of the violation. Again, these are for trees that are removed without, without a permit. We have also made some other technical type changes to the ordinance. Those are shown in red that relate to enforcement issues we've noticed in terms of the tree protection zone. We've combined some reduction, redundant sections, tried to better improve the flow of the ordinance. And we've made some further clarifications since first reading based on some conversations we have with the surveyor who regularly does tree surveys for us. I wanted to note that this proposal does affect properties countywide, although we do have distinctions between the rural and the walk-on-my-neck zone. Rural, in this case, meaning everything that's not on the walk-on-my-neck. There are some clarifications between the two districts. We can go over more specifically if you like, but there's a chart at the end of the ordinance that refers to those. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this issue. Six people spoke, all in favor of the ordinance changes. Other things were discussed and asked to be included, such as the inclusion of pine trees as protected trees. We do currently have exemptions for protected trees on occupied single-family parcels in both the rural and the walk-on-my-neck zones. And grand trees are exempted for occupied parcels in the rural zone, and there was some discussion about removing those restrictions. The Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval for the changes and request that council make further improvements as you see fit. That vote passed six to zero. So we have the attached ordinances before you. Again, the changes are those in red, and then there are a couple of minor changes in blue that were added since first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson?
I've got a question or two. Holly, did, did it, did I hear that we are going to have some, some parts of this ordinance is going to be specific to the walk-on-my-neck and others that are going to be specific to the mainland?
It's that way now.
It's that way now.
The current ordinance is split that way. They're referred to as overlay zones, the rural overlay and the walk-on-my-neck.
Well, I asked that question because I think that's a good thing, and I think that's something we all, we've all discussed as the demographics between the two areas, and there are many. I won't get into all that, but when we're doing these new elements to the, to the, the big plan, maybe we ought to be looking at separating some of these things either totally or partially without, without concerning ourselves as much as we have in the past, if that makes sense. I think, I think that's where we need to go with this, even looking at land use. You know, I've, I've talked to people about around the perimeter of the city of Georgetown here. Maybe we open some things up for some five-story buildings or housing, whatever, you know, and we don't have that right now, but I'm just laying that, I'd like you to think about that as a group, as being more flexible with our ordinances as far as the west side and the east side. That's just a comment. The other thing, I would direct this to Mr. Watson. When we talked about this sometime in the past, and I, and I know, I think you and I and Tommy talked about it, there was a, there was a threshold or fines that went from a misdemeanor to a felony. Do you recall anything about that?
Not specifically. I think what we were talking about was the enforcement aspect of it and whether to reference some of the statutes that would make it a, you know, when you're talking about misdemeanor felony, now you're getting into criminal violations, and I think that was what we were talking about. What we're looking at here, and I'd have to go back and look at the specifics, it's been a while since I worked with him on drafting this, but I think we tried to remove it from, from misdemeanor felony, we don't, you know, so that we don't get caught up in criminal procedures and criminal laws, but rather we just have some, under our ordinance, which we can enforce, we have some pretty hefty fines plus other administrative kind of regulations, such as you don't get a building permit or whatever, so that, you know, the, the ordinance would now have some teeth in it.
And I got, I've got no problem with that. I just was wondering, that was a, I was hoping that was a detail, and you're telling me that we've taken care of that.
Yes, sir, but I would want to look at the, I want to refresh my memory and get back with you on some of the specifics, if you have specific questions on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I got just really a thousand questions, but we don't have time here. The rural overlay zone. If a residence in a rural overlay zone cuts a grand tree that's DBH 24 inches or greater out of the number of live oaks, laurel oaks, hickories, red maple, boll, pine, cypress, American beets, southern magnolia, poplar, American elm, and river birch, any of those trees, under this new tree ordinance, what will the cost be if it's 24 inches?
If, if it is on the lot, the way the ordinance is presented right now, if it's on the lot where this person's home is, whether that lot is 10 acres or 10,000 square feet, if it is an occupied residential lot and they're located in the rural section of the county, then that grand tree is exempt from the requirements. So there will be, there would be no penalty because it's, it's exempt.
It's, it's exempt. There's no fines on the rural overlay.
Not in that instance. If it's the lot where, where their residence is, an occupied residential lot, then those trees are exempt from the tree protection requirements. That's the way the ordinance is written today.
If they live on, their house is on an acre lot, and they own the 50 acres behind them, and they go back there and cut a grand tree for firewood.
The 50 acres are separate from the lot where their house is, so that would be considered an unoccupied residential lot. So that would be reviewed under the requirements in the ordinance. It would need, need to meet one of those threshold. I don't think firewood is listed as one of those, so I think that would be an enforcement issue.
Really? So the fine could be more than what they make in a year?
$500 per inch. Yes, sir.
This is not... Miss, you know, we got, we've been talking among ourselves concerning this, and we got a bunch of questions that we don't have time to get through them all tonight. Is, Madam Administrator, is there any way that we could set up a workshop or some type of...
Yes.
To, to go through this, 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 this is 22 pages?
Mm-hmm. Yes. In fact, what I would suggest is that we do a workshop before the next council meeting in August. That will give us plenty of time to have some conversation with the various council members, staff, do you a little cheat sheet, take you through some, some scenarios to give you a better explanation of enforcement, the good, the bad, and the ugly of this, so we could be prepared for, for the conversation.
Will this include tree identification? I'm just shocked, I'm just shocked.
I might have to call in some reinforcements if you want that education, but I can tell you about the ordinance for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to defer this until further notice.
We have a motion by Counsel Anderson to defer ordinance number 23, dash 24. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counsel Newton. Any discussion? All in favor of the, of deferring ordinance number 23, dash 24? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Thank you. Let's go on down to ordinance number 23, dash 25 for second reading. Ms. Richardson.
This is my last one. This is an ordinance to adopt the 2023 economic development element of the comprehensive plan. This plan was last updated in 2013. Staff has worked with Ms. Harrison and the economic development staff on updates to this element. The Planning Commission reviewed a draft and held a workshop on March 9th. We received comments from various stakeholders. Those comments have been included in the document that you see there today. The document has six main goals with associated objectives, and those include the development of an industrial product, the redevelopment of the port property, workforce housing program, workforce development, a marketing plan, and small business engagement. And we have also taken, as the workforce housing is also obviously a big piece of our housing element, we have made the relevant connections to that element as well. The Planning Commission voted with a majority vote, a unanimous vote actually, at their June 15th meeting to recommend approval for the document. They also held a public hearing at that meeting where no one came forward to speak. The state law requires a public hearing before this body prior to a third reading, which we did hold tonight. So at this point, the Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval for this document.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Make a motion.
You've heard a report from Ms. Richardson. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 23, dash 25?
So moved.
Chairman, I move for second reading, approved, approval of ordinance number 23, dash 25.
Okay. If a motion for Counsel Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliot. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We move on down to, thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Yes.
We move on down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23, dash 26, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 24 operating budget of Georgetown County. And ordinance number 23, dash 27, authorizing Georgetown County, South Carolina, to enter into a base lease and conveyance agreement and an installment purchase and use agreement each between the county and Skago Public Facilities Corporation for Georgetown County. Approving the form in terms of a trust agreement between Skago Public Facilities Corporation for Georgetown County and Regions Bank as trustee in connection with the issuance of not exceeding $67 million principal amount of certain installment purchase revenue bonds, Georgetown County project in one or more series consenting to the issuance of such installment purchase revenue bonds, providing for an exemption from the county's procurement code, delegating authority to the chairman of county council and the county administrator or either of them acting alone to approve and determine certain matters and other matters relating thereto. We move down to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion for approval of our regular council meeting of June 27, 2023?
So moved.
This is moved by Counsel Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We have a personnel matter to be discussed within our executive session. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
The move by Counsel Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliot. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We now enter to executive session pursuant to SEC code annotated section 30, dash 4, dash 70A1 to discuss a personnel matter.
We are back. Is there a motion to move into open session?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Well, second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay. We are now back into open session. Please let the record reflect that we entered to executive session to discuss the personnel matter pursuant to SEC code annotated section 30 dash 4 dash 7881. And let the record also reflect that during our discussion in executive session, no votes were taken by council members. Now, is there any further business to come before council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercado. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We stand adjourned. Have a good evening.